Okay. Call the May 17th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. There are a couple of small changes to the agenda. We have some unforeseen business that we needed to attend to immediately, which is going to be added to new business, opening Candle Street to the taxis before this weekend as the taxi stand. And under citizen departmental requests, number two has been withdrawn for this meeting. And with those changes, we'll accept the agenda by unanimous consent. Libby, announcements?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We just really have a couple of main announcements. This meeting is being audio and video recorded in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law. And we have 2017 committee board and commission vacancies are open now. There's a lot of information on the town website. All of the committees, boards, and commissions that have vacancies are listed here on the screen. Our first public hearing for committee applicants is next Wednesday, and then we have one more public hearing, and then appointments are made on June 21st. So if people are interested in applying for any particular group, please check out the town website. And lastly, we have Department of Public Works Week proclamation and a special recognition for a retiring employee. So I think we're going to have DPW Director review the proclamation, and then the special recognition will require the people at the table to come up front, and we'll give the recognition.
Did you want me to read the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay. National Public Works Week, May 21st through 27th, 2017. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, highways, and drainage, public buildings, solid waste, and recycling; and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Nantucket do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week in the Town of Nantucket. We call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works personnel make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thank you very much. Board of Selectmen, I feel honored tonight to represent the men and women of the Nantucket Department of Public Works, as we, along with other departments across the globe, celebrate the public works profession during this year's National Public Works Week. Every year since 1960, the American Public Works Association has celebrated the important contributions that public works professionals make in citizens' daily lives, including the planning, building, managing, and operating the heart of our local communities, its infrastructure. Taking time out to recognize the vitally important contributions that public works professionals make every day, and the crucial role that infrastructure, facilities, and services play in the quality of our life in our communities, is helpful to continue to motivate and encourage these people who serve our town. Public works professionals are often the unsung heroes of society, and National Public Works Week honors those who serve the public good every day with dedication. Tonight, we would like to proudly honor one of our own. I'd like to call up Kenny Hammond. His kind smile and genuine willingness to always lend a hand is already missed since his retirement. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Kenny Hammond for his 31 years for his 31 years of dedicated service to the Town of Nantucket. Thank you, Kenny.
When I first started, I was Johnny Oliver, who was the last one who attended it. He was the last one to hire me, and God bless him, he was a great guy, and it's been a great honor to have served the island for 31 years of service. It doesn't seem like it's been that long. It seems like it's been a long time.
Madam Chairman, I just want to say, we're going to really miss Kenny down in our office. He's been faithfully coming in to take our recyclables and other things, and he's always up for a little chat about or a joke about anything, and he has a lot of arrowheads.
A lot of hold your stuff. If you hold on to them, you find something better.
We're on to public comment. Is there anything that anyone wanted to comment about that's not otherwise on our agenda? Okay, hearing done. Under new business, it's just been requested last minute that we open the taxi stand early on Candle Street. And I think with it being wine festival weekend, that probably makes some sense.
Yeah. Want a motion?
Yes, please.
So moved?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And we will revisit changing the calendar on that location, probably at a June meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of...
One question. What ever happened with, there was a climate change plan or something, and those old minutes going way back? Did we ever, did that ever pass, or was it never implemented?
It ended up requiring quite a bit of data collection and levels of emissions and things to be monitored and tracked, and there just wasn't the resources to do that. But we have recently a little bit talked about how we could revive such a thing, because one of the requirements to be a green community is that you have to have a climate action plan. So it hasn't totally disappeared, and there may be still some value in the plan that was done, but it takes, it's an effort.
With an energy office, we may be better situated than we were.
We may be, yep.
Approval of payroll warrants, treasury warrants. You name is consent. Approval of pending contracts. Are there any questions on the contracts? There's quite a few here, but a lot of it's CPC.
Yes, I'm fine.
Can I get a motion to approve those?
So moved. I move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Acceptance of a gift for 15 Liberty Street sidewalk.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, now I'll open a public hearing to consider application of a new mobile food unit license for Bartlett Farm.
And I'm going to step down on this, just in case. In case it's sound.
So, this is a license request on Bartlett's Farm is requesting of a mobile food unit license for, we have photos here of a trailer they're going to have on their property mainly here, and then we included a menu, ice cream, and snacks, and different items there on their property, and also private events. So they passed all health plan approved and all that, so there's no objections to it. If they were to want to be on public property, of course, they would come back for further approval.
Okay.
Looks nice. Looks cool. Looks good.
I saw it the other day. I should just make a disclosure that Holgate's Laundry does do some laundry for Bartlett Farm. Did you want to say anything, John?
John Bartlett, for Bartlett Farm. I'm just here if you have any questions. It's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wanted to speak? Okay, I will close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Public hearing to consider application for a new seasonal general on-premise wine and malt beverage license for NGM Inc., DBA, Siya Scanset Golf Course. Joan M. Casey manager for premises located at 260 Milestone Road. This is the Skinner's Land Bank Golf Course.
Yes. So, just background on this, last year in April, this applicant came before the board to apply for a seasonal liquor license as well. At the time, they were applying for a club license, wine and malt license. That license request was not approved. It was denied by the vote of four to zero, I believe, in April. At the time, the decision, I think I included the letter in there, the decision was made based on lack of food service, I believe, at the time. With a club license, there is a commedicular that goes along with that, and some other reasons that they thought, events, and I think special event was a concern at the location. They, I believe, appealed to the state at the time, and we're going to come back with a separate application, but then withdrew it at the time to regroup and have come back. Generally, it has to be 12 months before they make a request again for an application that was initially denied. In this case, they are applying for a seasonal general on-premises license. That is different in that it does not require food service. We just approved one similarly for White Hair and Theater, because that's not a restaurant. It's something where there is going to be alcohol service on the premises, but it's not a restaurant setting, and they are not currently looking for a commedicular license. So it is different in that respect. They gave you a plan, the specific areas in the clubhouse where they would have alcohol service. There's no objections. They have, it's built for this, they have the storage capabilities. This would allow it to be more regulated service rather than, you know, BYOB type of thing that it is now. So as far as from a licensing perspective, it would help us more in a regulation sense for the license.
Thank you.
For the record, Brian Swain, attorney for the applicant. I'm here with the proposed manager, Joan Casey, and the land bank commissioner, Neil Patterson. I think Amy did a good job articulating what happened with the previous application, just to sort of provide some emphasis on some of the points she had just said. This is a general on-premises license. The black letter law of Chapter 138, Section 12, provides specifically that you do not need to serve food as a licensee under list classification. And the service of this particular dispensary is one where it's not a destination bar. The proposed hours of operation are in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, also the municipal bylaws, and even further to the effect that they're proposing to be opened from 8:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday and closing at 7:00 p.m. with a last call at 6:30. So no service would be provided to anyone after 6:30 at night, and everyone would be outside of the premises at 7:00 p.m. The same on Sundays. However, on Sundays, you're only allowed to serve between 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 a.m. We'd be looking for service between 11:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. with the same last call at 6:30. And as Amy said, there's four golf courses on the island, three of the four have liquor licenses. I think this would be beneficial for the town and the land bank to implement a regulatory scheme where instead of having patrons bring their own and carrying their own alcohol on course. You know, there's no entertainment component of this, there's no plans to have any big events there. It is the type of atmosphere where after your round of golf, you would converse with other golfers or patrons, talk about your round. There's no amplified music, there's no television, there's no house music, nothing to that effect. It's just a type of place where you could go out, play some golf, have a beer, or a glass of wine, and sit out on the deck or in the bar area and converse with whoever you're playing with. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If I can't answer them, the proposed managers here, and also Commissioner Patterson. Thank you.
Okay. It's a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wanted to speak? Sir?
I just wanted to speak in favor of considering...
Oh, can you just please come to the microphone and identify yourself?
My name is Frank Muse. I've lived here 27 years. I worked for Yates Gas, which is on Milestone Road. I'll probably be purchasing a summer membership at Scanset Golf Course, and I just wanted to speak in favor as a year-round resident. It would be nice to be after a night holes of golf to be able to sit and have an adult beverage on the deck relaxing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to say anything? Close the public hearing? What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it, and I want to comment. I opposed it last time. One of my concerns is that, you know, is that we just keep adding alcohol in package stores and everything, and I think as a community, we need to have that discussion as a board. We need to have a discussion as when enough enough. But I think the changes that you've proposed are reasonable, and, you know, no special events, staying open to a certain time, and you are providing a service, I can go with that. But I do think as a board, we need to start thinking about it, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing to consider application for New Dealer in Junk Gold Metals and Second-Hand Articles License for Pauline Warren, Nantucket Estate Jewelry and Fine Arts located at 1 Orange Street.
Yes. So this is in our efforts to bring a lot of these shops regulations per Chapter MGL 140 and Nantucket Code, Chapter 88, regarding junk metals and second-hand merchandise. So we are getting these shops licensed. Basically, if they're dealing in second-hand articles, there's regulations to, for record keeping and that sort of thing, and recording the origin of these effects, and allowing for inspections and that sort of thing throughout. So it's just asking that. We have them regulated, and this Warren shop is on Orange and Main Street there, I think 1 Orange Street, correct? And so we're just asking her to come up to regulations.
Okay.
Pauline Warren, 88 Orange Street, Nantucket. We are trying to get a license to operate at 1 Orange Street. Used to be Lady Bird's years and years ago, Lady Bird's lingerie. Anyway, I very much appreciate it. We've complied with all the demands and requests or the needs for the license, and it will be fine jewelry, fine gold, silver, platinum, and art, fine art, good art, good jewelry. And they still call it junk, but it's secondhand.
We're sorry for what it's called.
It's just resale. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment? Okay, hearing done. I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
I don't have any questions. I'd move approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, town managers report. Update on Duke's Road Sewer.
This has been already discussed by the board a few months ago, and basically, to make a long story short, the sewer line that was installed within the last couple of years in Duke's Road had a lot of issues associated with it with regard to how the property owners were communicated with in terms of requiring connections and things of that nature. So the selectmen voted not to charge a connection fee for the people along Duke's Road, and we issued them all a letter to that effect. However, in the course of doing that, we realized that there are people who had already paid the connection fee, and that some of them have inquired about a refund, and that wasn't specifically dealt with by the board when this was initially before you. So our recommendation is that we let the people who've already paid know that they are eligible for a refund. However, they must make written application for it to our office. They don't need to come up here before you, but they need to make a written application. So it's just sort of closing the loop on something.
And was there a deadline on that?
Yes, I'm sorry. By October 30th, which is also the Board of Health deadline for connection, 2017, for connection to that, so we're...
And are you thinking a letter in the mail?
We'll send them a letter in the mail, yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we're going to get an update from DPW in regard to the Orange Street Intown.
Did you want a motion on that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or at least a consensus on that.
I'd make a motion to give refunds with that deadline of October 30th.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And they'll all be notified, correct?
Correct. By letter.
Yep.
Okay.
We've had some recent activity on the Orange Street Intown Bike Path Project, and this is a state-operated and run project, sponsored project. So we asked Rob, DPW Director, to just give a brief update about the project. We've gotten some inquiries from the public and others about the status of it.
Good evening. Rob McNeil, DPW. So essentially, the project's about 80% complete. Unfortunately, the timing of the utilities' switchover are keeping the bike path from being open for the busy season. Right now, the contractor, the state's contractor, has demobilized for the summer. They are mopping up a couple different small items. Parking area over on Washington Street Extension in the sales restaurant area. They are dealing with some sidewalk issues. Sidewalk in front of an Orange Street address needs to be paved. That's currently stoned dust. And you might have seen Verizon out there as early as today, working to pull fiber. They have fiber optic splicing that's going to occur. The schedule is to carry that all the way into July, I believe, for Verizon. So right now, with utility poles still carrying Verizon fiber, they are unable to be pulled. They're being transferred, but there's still a lot of work to be done before the existing poles that are still in Orange Street can be removed. That's what's kept the final paving from happening on Orange. So DPW has been in support with the state and the state's contractor, basically to try to, where we can, we've had a number of complaints that we've had to go out and deal with pavement joints on Orange Street, making sure we move cones out of the travel way. We anticipate that it's going to be somewhat of a burden over the summer to deal with the bike path being signed closed. You know, we do recognize that some folks have chosen to use it even though it's closed. But after speaking with council and with our insurance folks, the way that the contractor and the state essentially have left it for the summer, signed, closed, and cornered off is where it needs to stay. So we do believe the utilities will be out of the way mid-season with Verizon getting out, so hopefully the poles will be able to be removed, which will certainly open the door for the project to be completed timely. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
I have one. If it's signed, closed, but people use it, are we going to enforce that or not, or what's the...
So, no. I don't believe we are.
All right, so if they use it, they use it, it's at their own risk?
It's at their own risk, yes.
I got you. Okay.
So you think that the poles will come out sometime in July, and then those...
What do you think, though?
They'll get passed?
I honestly, we...
That's your guess.
I'm guessing September, October.
I would just say, you know, your guess is as good as mine. We've been working to have the state check up on the utility providers to get schedules, but we've also been told by other parties that the utility providers have their own specific schedule.
Yeah.
That information really hasn't been shared very well with us. To see them here and working is certainly encouraging, and certainly as soon as the poles are removed, make sure we repair that area and get that prepared for the state to come in and finish up.
Jason?
Yep. I've been getting a lot of questions on this, because I'm seen as the bike guy sometimes.
Sure.
And I think a misconception is, oh, why can't DPW just go in and just finish it? And I say, well, it's a state job, we can't. Can you reaffirm that, that the difference is there?
Definitely. So I would say the town has the capabilities.
Right.
But we certainly don't have the obligation, nor do we want to assume the risk.
Right.
And we don't have the, you know, this is a state-funded project. So, yes, all valid questions, but there's a lot more to it. There's still an active sewer that runs down the bike path alignment that the sewer department Dave people is working together with the state to handle the sewer from Goose Pond Lane. There's still some work that needs to take place there, and then eventually that sewer man needs to be replaced, sorry, abandoned in place, which will include lowering some of the structures that are already too grade, below grade, so that they'll be out of the, there won't be a tripping hazard in the way of any bike traffic in the future.
I want to leave the party when it's ready in the fall, or whatever it is. It's beautiful, it's going to be great.
Sure. No, I would assume that there's going to be a pretty well-organized and advertised ribbon cutting for that type of thing. I mean, certainly in the times we've been out, and some of the other members for the board have been out, along with the BPAC folks, and certainly with town administrator, town administration office, and the state folks, it's, we're all working towards that end, so.
I guess I'm channeling Bobby a little bit, you know, so I'm not going to yell and scream, but how would we coordinate it in the future with the state? How is, what's the way of coordinating this whole thing better so that it would be done in one, you know, one winter, or one six months or something? Is there any suggestions you have?
To make sure we don't run into the summer.
And I understand you're coming into this kind of late in the game.
No, it's a fair question. Ultimately, we like to have all of our projects start and finish before the high season starts. That is the goal of any project. I can't really speak to how this one got started and is not ready for that, but that is the goal, Matt, and we clearly are working together with all the other projects that we have ongoing to try to realize and work with our contractors.
Have a timeline that everyone agrees on?
June 30th. You're done.
And a timeline that everyone agrees on?
Yes.
And they've all signed off on prior?
Correct.
Kind of thing? Okay, that makes sense.
Is this one of the disadvantages of, a few disadvantages of having tip money at stake? We have a little less control.
Right. We definitely have a lot less control. And in fact, each, more importantly, each time the town sort of interjects its own wants or needs, wants that contract to sign, you're really, A, you're opening yourself up potentially to some liability. You're certainly opening up the town to additional costs that are likely unforeseen and added to the, which is why the state's, you know, makes the town sign a contract saying, any extras are on you. So, I mean, there is a lot of still give and take during that construction phase. There's certain things that the contract, if they has a line item for, we can work through and get additional fencing or, you know, something like that. But by the time the contract's here, it's kind of too late to be sort of redesigning in the field.
So some of this, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that can we just continue to get the word out there so people understand? More and more people are going to be coming, they're not going to understand what's happening as far as the safety there, and why it's not done, and why aren't we doing it? I just want to keep, keep having that word out there that it's a state project, and to be cautious.
I just wanna keep having that word out there that it's a state project and to be cautious in the area.
I think we'll continue to get the word out.
Peter Sutter's.
Through every meeting, it's possible.
Now, in a situation like this, who signs the contract and who reviews the contract?
The contract is actually signed by the state.
Right, but on our side, who's doing it?
The only thing that we, I think that we sign, and that would be town manager, that would be signing to any extras.
No, but the original contract was, did you sign that, Libby, or is that an...
Are we talking about engineering contract?
Well, just the contract with the state to do this work. Like, is that...
Yeah, it probably came to the board, and before it comes to the board and me to approve, it theoretically has gone through a public works review, and we were not able to locate that that had happened in a robust manner.
Okay. And the reason I'm also asking is a lot of this is through the NPDNC, and so, you know, and it gets, it gains, you know, it's all put in a queue and X amount of money, et cetera. But I think the coordination probably could be tightened between, you know, DPW and us who get the flak and...
So, I would tell you that we've taken measures in my first month to make that happen. In fact, just prior to tonight's meeting here, I left a meeting with Andrew Vorse and Mike Burns. So, and Chuck and I work regularly now. We're meeting Mike and Andrew weekly to make sure that we coordinate, you know, from concept through construction.
That's great.
I don't, you know, I think moving forward, Rob's got a process for this. I don't think we're gonna see this happen again, but are there other legacy projects that you are of any size that you're cleaning up that we should be aware of that may have impacts on?
All of them, frankly.
Easy ask if there aren't.
Yeah.
So, I mean, just major ones that...
Milk Street, First Way, those are the two that really jump out.
Okay, yeah. So, those are all just...
Not totally off the rails, but some details I think that would really make or break.
Because we made a commitment to the public to have First Way, we made a couple commitments in terms of completion, so that's another one to be aware of and, you know, sensitive to as people ask questions about it, so.
Definitely. Well, First Way's well underway, and we're on track. We're meeting weekly with all the parties involved.
Okay, good. Thank you.
We're confident that we're gonna finish on schedule there.
You're confident on Milk Street as well?
I would say that Milk Street is a little bit shakier, but we are working with the contractor right now to get him back out there to finish up the original contract. I think the plan is to come back in at the end and mill and overlay the whole stretch within the project limits. That'll be done with a different, our paving contract separate from the original project. But the bike path is definitely moving forward.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. All we have under selectmen's reports and comments are committee reports. I do have one. Does anybody else?
Yeah, Jason's gonna do the water quality update.
I was gonna do NCTV-18.
Okay, so, water quality update. Jason and I were there, and Don popped in as well. Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the overall sense is that our nitrogen levels are decreasing in the estuaries and ponds. Sacagawea Pond is still a major issue, but although the nitrogen levels are decreasing, we haven't reached our thresholds, so we still need to keep doing what we're doing as well as trying to understand why the eelgrass isn't coming back. So, water quality is okay. We're not meeting our thresholds yet, but we're doing better, but we're still losing our eelgrass, so. And as to why, you know, the nitrogen and nutrient loading is decreasing, combination of the new jetty fertilizer regulations and sewer with, can't really pinpoint one per se, but it's a combination of what we've been doing.
And some wastewater and probably IA systems.
Yeah.
I think it's important people to realize it's more than just nitrogen. You know, the state is focused on nitrogen, but a lot of the other stuff that's going in could be contributing to the eelgrass and to other problems. And Sacagawea is, was an opening issue. That was, that pond was one of the first ponds taken off the impaired list, and it was a huge, you know, positive three or four years ago, and we're back, because it didn't open well for a couple of years.
Yeah, and you said that that is somewhat, it's not lucky per se, but it has to do with other environmental factors that, and they're trying to get better at their openings. But, yeah, it's still a problem. And it's actually, that one has, I think, one of the only ones that's increased over the past three years. And I think what you, the point you made about nitrogen not being the only problem, that is something that we really have to look at, particularly in the harbor, I think, was one of the major points where by the scales and the metrics that we use, which are very broad, our water quality is actually quite good, but we still don't have the eelgrass recovery, so it is something above and beyond just the nitrogen.
Steve Bender used to talk about surfacants, and he was a chemist, and he used to talk about, you know, cleaning materials and medicine and all sorts, you know, the fancy names for it, but there's a lot of things that are getting pumped in there now that weren't going in there a while ago, and so, it's not just a nitrogen issue.
Exactly. That's mine.
Yeah. I really enjoyed the water quality meeting, and I learned a lot.
Yeah.
What I saw that is, was a good discussion.
For NCTV-18, there's a board member that sits on that committee, and who's one of the better meetings we've had in a long time, is effective, new president, new members are coming in. But I think the best thing is that I've seen is the amount of people that are coming in using their equipment and making quality programs from. I mean, there's six high schoolers coming in doing a talk show, and they have a crew of 14. And two, three years ago, no one really knew about NCTV-18, so the progress there is going really well. And then also, I have a contract coming up with Comcast, and that's, I'm sure we'll be doing a lot more with that. Is that two years?
2019.
2019, yeah. So, it was a good meeting.
Good. The CPC Annual Forum was yesterday, and it was at the African Meeting House, which was really lovely to see that project come almost to completion. I believe it's been 14 years of putting all that together and CPC making donations to it. And it was just, it was a really nice event. There was a speaker that came from Boston, and we learned that Nantucket actually abolished slavery prior to the rest of Massachusetts, and I thought that that was a nice progressive historical fact for the island. And it was, yeah, it was well-attended, too.
I forgot I had one more meeting. Capcom, Capitol Program Committee, I met this morning for the first time of the year. It's been three months since they met last, and I'm new to that committee, so it was very interesting, kind of building the strategy for what they wanna, what we wanna look at this year, working with town administration. And so, it was kind of a review strategy session, I had one more of those, but that was a good, good two-hour getting into Capitol.
Excellent.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.